You're good now.
Welcome, all the throng of crowds. Thank you for coming. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Christian, would you like to do roll call, please?
I would love to. Councilmember Wilson.
Here.
Councilmember Black is absent. Councilmember Derringer.
Here.
Mayor Prokhorov and Piper.
Here.
And Mayor Mershon. Here. Christian, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't want anyone to lead, but you've got to be ready.
Yeah. I've been rehearsing.
No presentations or proclamations or announcements? Approve the order of the agenda?
Need to approve.
Second?
Is...
Yes.
Is it in the right order for...
No, as a matter of fact, I would like to move, thank you for reminding me that, I would like to move 13A.
There's nothing in front of it.
Nothing in front of it.
It is.
But...
First one.
Never mind.
Madam Mayor, did you want to move that in front of any excluded consent calendar items? Should there be any?
If I could?
Yeah. You could.
I would like to get him headed back to the other side of the world. Is that all right with everybody else?
Yep, that sounds great.
Yes, we're on agreement.
Okay. Thank you very much, and thank you for reminding me. So with that...
Still need to approve.
Okay, thank you.
Seconded by Councilmember Piper.
Seconded by Councilmember...
Well, I mean, are we, I do want to just exclude item A.
Yeah, yeah, we're just...
Oh, I approve, yeah, approve of that, yes.
The order of the agenda.
And I'll second it?
On favor?
Aye.
Thank you, okay. Blue folder items, seeing none. Public comment on non-agenda items.
I make a motion, we approve 8A, B, C, D, E, G, and exclude F.
Second?
Any others?
That need to be pulled? Okay. All favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much.
There's nothing there.
All right, so now we are going to, if it's all right since we're not keeping anybody else, going to move item 13A, the preliminary fiscal year budget projections. And Robert, we have you.
Madam Mayor, members of council, so we are continuing our discussion with the budget for next year. As you know, the goal is for us to be able to adopt a budget in June of this year, and that will become effective July 1. This presentation is going to be about an hour and a half. Just kidding.
Robert, where did that come from?
It's going to be short.
You're so lucky Jim's not here.
Yeah. Kind of a version of what was presented to the Finance and Budget Committee a few weeks ago, but really is to present to council so you all have a sense of where we're going, and just to kind of keep you in the loop and make sure you're kind of blessing what we're doing as we go along in this process. So, just by way of context, you know, so we are in April now, so between now and June, we have to get a few things accomplished. We have been working on the revenue side of things, so that's really important. We want to have a good sense of where do we think we're going to be next year with revenues, the focus, of course, being on the general fund, because that sort of sets the table of how much money do we have to spend, and are we going to need to make cuts to our budget, or are we going to, we have some opportunity to expand services, or increase services, or adjust the budget?
And so that's kind of where we're at?
In the rest, later this month, we're going to come back to you, and it'll be the city staff presenting to all of you the expenditure side of the budget. What's, you know, I'm going to be talking sort of about a status quo, baseline budget, but staff has been working over the last few weeks, and will continue to work on coming up with what they propose for next year on the expenditure side within the general fund by department and line item. It's not going to change dramatically, but you know, we might have some, we want to clean it up. We're always refining the numbers, and we're always trying to make the numbers more credible and all that, but that's going to be coming forward at the end of this month. And then after that, we're going to kind of try to finalize the numbers and have councils and public review in more detail, and then we'll hopefully look at adopting in June. So I want to focus on the, some key general fund revenues. We did go over some of this stuff as part of the mid-year, but I wanted to just focus on the key revenues. And I'm going to start kind of with here, this part here, because property taxes is our largest revenue. It represents, you know, 40%, 50%, I'm not sure anymore, but a big part of our budget on the revenue side. So I wanted to just to remind everybody kind of what drives the growth every year. So there are three components to the growth in property taxes. The first is the annual CPI, and you're all familiar with the fact that under Prop 13, property tax assessments or assessed values can go up no more than 2%. Few years, several years ago, when CPI was very, very low, and the ones, the assessment only went up by less than 2% because CPI was less. So it's going to be the lower of CPI or 2%. And then we will also see during any given year what are called supplemental taxes or assessments. Levy date is January 1. If there are properties that change hands after that date, after they already established the levy, those property owners, the new property owners will be issued a supplemental tax. I'm sure all of you have experienced that in your life. And so that brings in additional revenue during the, in that year to us, above the 2% growth potential. Long term, what will drive that growth is the turnover in properties, because under Prop 13, because they can only grow up to 2% per year, the true value of properties is much greater than what the Prop 13 assessed value is, and particularly in a community like this where there's not a lot of turnover, and it's an older community. If you were to compare the market value to the assessed value, it's a dramatic gap there, and that represents potential as those properties turn over for additional revenues to the city. So what drives the real growth for us primarily is how quickly and how many properties turn over, and what the values, those values are. Prior to the rise in interest rates, we were seeing a high number of turnover in properties, which means that they were being reassessed, and then the revenues were growing pretty substantially, on average 5% to 6% per year. But that third component really is the largest growth. When we see 5% or 6%, again, 2% is the CPI, and maybe a half a percent is supplemental, but the rest of that is from these reassessments. And I mention all that because the interest rate increases that occurred starting last year, more than a year ago, have slowed down the volume of sales, which is having an impact on that third component, the reassessment because of the lack of turnover in properties. A neighboring city that I work with, they have a consultant, HDL, that analyzes all this stuff in LA County and within their city, and they have projected for their client a growth from next year of 3.5% because of that third component, rather than the 5% or 6%. Eventually, we'll, you know, we'll get back there, hopefully, but you know, for now, at least for the next couple of years, we can expect to see an estimated growth of 3.5%. So I mentioned that because that's kind of what I'm projecting for next, for next year, a 3.5% growth, which is much different than we've seen in the last seven or eight years, the 3.5% growth based on our current year projections. What you can see in the middle set of bars, in the darker color, we have, I'm projecting that we're going to hit about $1,450,000, so $1,449,000, that's what they're projected at the end of this current year. So if you add 3.5% to that, we're expecting $1,005,000 next year. Yes, I'm sorry.
On the property tax slide, you had, as one of the bullet points, consultant from neighboring city projected 3.5% for their client for next two years. Who's that neighboring city?
Palos Verdes Estates.
Oh, Palos Verdes Estates. So, and so do you think that our city is really related to PVE?
Yeah.
And that, and...
Yes, because LA, statewide, but in LA County, the number of the volume has really dropped dramatically. It's, you know, dropped 30% in some areas. So, you know, without knowing for sure, I thought, okay, neighboring city, part of LA County. If we're in a different county, I might think differently, but I think that you can expect about the same growth next year as your neighbor.
And they're saying it's for two years, not just for this coming year?
Yeah, we want to vote.
The next year, but they're expecting this is going to be 3.5% for the next two years. Yeah.
So I guess needless to say, the consultant is someone you respect?
Yes.
Many, many years, yes, yes.
So that's property taxes, again, our projection to $1,005,000. Real property transfer taxes, as a reminder, this is the tax that's imposed. It's called detransfer tax, documentary tax, but it's basically a tax on any time property is sold here in California. It's based on, it's $1.10 for every $1,000 of value or a sales price. It's split between the city and the county, so we get 50, 55 cents on every $1,000 of value. So if a million dollar home sells, we would get $550,000. Now, a million dollars is a low number for in this area, but that's kind of how it works. You can see the history of that. Again, volumes were higher before. 2021 was probably where we had the peak volume. We had $132,000 in revenues. You can imagine how many properties sold and the values. It declined over the next couple of years, and then this year, we're actually projecting $63,000. So it looks like the volume is starting to pick up a little bit, and I've assumed the growth to 3% for next year. So just to be conservative, hard to predict, you know, what volumes are going to be next year, but I am assuming some level of increase in growth, or some growth of 3%.
Pat contributed to that, thank you.
You're a giver.
Give till it hurts.
Yeah, I did.
I'm not sure what happened there, but, so this is building another permit revenue. I showed this to you before when we did a mid-year review, but really, what I added here was the projection for next year. And what I did was I took the $183,000 we've gotten so far through December 31st, which is the second to the last row, and that actually represents five months of revenues, just because of the timing of how we get the money. So I just extrapolated that and maybe for the whole year, assuming that trend continues, and that would come up with $440,000 in the current year, and I assume no growth for next year. There's no way to know whether it's going to go up or down. This is a number that's probably, I feel, the least confident of, but just based on the current year revenues through December, I'm going to assume 440 this year, and the same number next year.
And truthfully, we've got two or three giant projects that are going through the planning commission right now.
Yeah.
So if that stuff happens, it might take them seven years to get a permit, but, so I don't know if it'll actually happen in, it won't happen this year, but it probably should start happening next year from a permit standpoint.
Yeah.
And, and Robert, I have a question on that as well. So the number of permits, if I read the narrative, the number of permits isn't really decreasing a whole lot, but the bout, the cost of the permits are, so is that meaning they're smaller projects as opposed to the ones, the bigger ones that have already, okay?
Yeah, that's correct. I mean, you look at the third from the bottom, 38 were the number of permits, and a value of $4.5 million. Not many less than that, 33 with a half value. And maybe people are just sort of done with the big stuff, and they're focusing on the little stuff. I don't know. But that's a correct assessment. Motor vehicle license fee we get, it's based on a 2% tax for, on the vehicle value.
It diminishes every year, so when you pay your registration fee, it's going to decrease.
Car goes down over time. You can see the recent trends is pretty stable, you know, it just kind of goes up every year. I'm projecting $272,000 this year against the budget of $269,000, so slightly above budget. And then I assume that 3%, growth based on the fact that over the last several years, it's grown on average 3.6%. So just to be a little conservative.
I have a question. We don't have this slide in our packet, but I would see it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it appears that the PowerPoint in the packet is the incorrect one, so we're going to re-upload this one to the archives after the meeting.
Okay. But I have a question. So if someone basically renews their motor vehicle fees, how much of that fee comes to the city if the car, if the resident lives in Rolling Hills that's renewing their vehicle fee?
That's a good question.
You know, most of the revenue is kept by the state, but, or at least a portion of it goes, goes with the state. The county gets some, and then the cities get a portion of that. I don't remember what the breakdown is of how much we get of that 2%. Good question. I used to know. It's been a while.
Because we, because we get 6.5% of the property tax.
Property tax.
Yes, and that's different.
Think it's similar?
I don't know that it's similar. I don't think, there's no relationship between the two, yeah. So this is the totality of the revenues for the general fund. So the yellow column represents what I'm projecting for this year. And those numbers are going to change slightly, but not much, I don't think, with the exception perhaps of the building revenues. Those could change up or down. And our projections for next year are in the blue. And you can see that, for the most part, I'm just assuming flat, because, one, either they're small revenues, or, two, there's no way to, they're so variable from year to year, there's no way to know whether we're going to see an increase or decrease. So I just kind of, for the sake of being conservative, assume no growth. But certainly for property taxes and property transfer tax and all that, I did apply a growth rate based on what we just talked about. And this is where I'd like you to kind of give me some feedback, because, you know, this is how, the direction we're going, or I'm going. If you feel like you would like to be more aggressive or less aggressive on any of these things, let me know, and we can certainly have that discussion.
Be more aggressive on revenue?
Or less, but, you know, however you want to.
Guess we're going to make more, I mean.
Maybe you feel like you want to do 4% on sales. I don't know. There's, I think these are reasonable, but I still want to make sure you are comfortable with those.
I don't understand sales tax at all. I'm not sure.
I assume that's a slice of any online.
Yes, yes. And sales, yes. You know, I always apply a 3% growth because that's typically what CPI is, so prices tend to go up 3% per year, you know, 3% per year.
Well, you know, I do have a question about the CPI. You said that we get the higher, or the lower of 2% or CPI?
Yes.
On the property tax.
Yes, the growth.
What CPI are you talking about?
Well, the county uses a pretty standardized, it's a Department, yeah, it's the Department of Labor, Bureau of Labor Statistics.
Prop 13 is statewide, but we rely on a CPI that's within our county?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And it's, there's like 25 different CPIs. Is it?
Yeah.
All, you know?
Yeah.
There's a trash CPI.
Yeah.
We found out.
They all tend to use the same one, you know, all urban wage.
That's what I was asking.
Yeah.
Okay, but sometimes then it says Anaheim Riverside, LA.
Yeah.
But you said it's in our county, so that...
Well, I guess the one, like LA County will use the one as predominantly in LA County, and maybe has some other cities within that. But, yeah, so, but every county uses sort of a different CPI, because it's different for every county. I don't know exactly which one LA County uses, but that's what they use to apply the growth on the assessment values. Good question. On the expenditure side, so just without leaving, looking at this slide, conceptually, where we're at today is we're just trying to get a sense of where do we think we're going to be next year, order of magnitude. As I mentioned earlier, we are going to come back to you, staff's going to come back to you and bring their proposal for the expenditure budget. But for purposes of this exercise today, I just tried to come up with what I call a baseline or status quo budget. Kind of what do we got going today, and that's it, and just those ongoing costs. The only thing I really adjusted for, for '24, '25 are MOU increases that are going to be, you know, assumed are going to be based on the CPI. We know we're going to see about a 3.5% growth on salaries, and then any benefit enhancements there. So that's all I did to the current year numbers. I added, adjusted for the adjustments, adjusted for the increases, and in this case, decreased the salary and benefit cost because of turnover in staff, people starting to lower salary ranges. We actually are going to see a savings next year on the salary and benefit side of things, at least in the city administrator's budget, where we've seen a lot of turnover. In planning and development, we haven't seen that turnover, so that's just a 3.5% growth on the salaries and benefits. But overall, we are going to see our status quo budget next year, or at least the status quo budget going down relative to our ongoing amended budget this year. Again, we're going to come back to you with any proposed adjustments to that, whether it be, you know, enhancements, or realignments, or reallocations, but this is just for purposes of this exercise.
Can you go back for a second?
Yeah, yeah.
On public safety, I assume a lot of that is the Sheriff's Department?
Yes, yes.
Why would you not have a increase just for that?
Yeah, there will be. I didn't assume anything at this point because I didn't have the information, but I, Christian just advised me that we're going to see about a 3% increase, so we'll build that into that.
I wanted to ask a question, because the one we have in our packet has amended budget, but then this one says ongoing, which is higher than the ongoing amended budget, and your slide also has a status quo budget, which I didn't see in here. So what's the difference?
I would ignore what's in your packet, since we're going to replace that.
Yeah, so this is the adopted budget.
It's on the far left, in terms of numbers.
Amendment.
And then the amended budget for the ongoing stuff. Like, we had a lot of amendments to the budget, but they were one time. I think there were one or two items that were ongoing that were approved this year. So that represents the ongoing amended budget. And then the status quo budget is kind of this going forward, taking that middle number and adjusting for salaries and benefits. That's really all we're doing. Makes sense, sort of?
Well, yeah, I'm not sure why we had all of this. We had an adopted budget, amended budget, pro-rated budget, and then actuals through 12/31, 23, and favorable variance or unfavorable.
That presentation was for, I think it was what we presented to the city council at the mid-year report, that's my understanding. So, again, I would not, I would not refer to that, because that's not relevant to this presentation.
It's the one in my packet.
No, yeah, got it.
Trying to figure out what the differences, what you're trying to portray here on this slide.
Yeah. They're different presentations, so I wouldn't focus on that. So this is kind of bringing together the revenues and expenditures, and what I would focus your attention on is the far right. So preliminary projections are revenues that we talked about based on what we're projecting today, and that number's probably going to change slightly, but not too much. And then our status quo budget for next year on the expenditure side before proposing any adjustments to that at the end of this month. So, again, the idea is...
Order of magnitude, how are we looking?
Looking like we're going to be at least balanced, and with a potential surplus of about $140,000. That'll change slightly, but it's kind of the, where we think we are going to be, roughly. So, you know, we're not dealing with any structural deficit, you know, it's just a matter of refining these numbers, and my expectation is we'll be adopting a balanced budget, and maybe having some surplus that helps toward any capital projects you might have in mind. So the only thing other than, as I mentioned, end of this month, coming back with expenditures by line item, is we do have a deadline of April 26th for sending out Prop 218 notices. Republic has advised us that their rates are going to be going up by 5% based on the CPI, and that represents, that's 40...
Their CPI.
There's...
I know, but it's lower than the traditional CPI.
Yeah.
Previously.
Yes. Last year, I think it was 3.5%, 4%, but this year, the CPI they used, it was just because of the month that they used, it was above 5%, and the max they can go is 5%. And so that's, represents $49,000, and that's $70 per parcel per year. And so the question really before you, I said in this regard, is do we anticipate that we're going to raise rates to cover that, or is there an interest in council to have the general fund, like as we've done in the past, subsidize that increase? Because right now, we're kind of, we're no longer subsidizing. Again, not a lot of money, $70 per year, that's the annual amount, the per parcel.
Okay, so the projected surplus was how much?
About $140,000. That's just rough.
And if we didn't increase the rate by the 49, then the projected surplus would be $90,000?
No, I assume that that $49,000 would be paid for by the ratepayers through an increase to their parcel.
But got us to the $140,000.
Yeah, I didn't include, I didn't assume that the general fund would be paying for this in my number.
Right, okay.
I assumed that the ratepayers would pay for that, but I wanted to get that confirmation from council.
How much did we increase it last year, based on our passing the cost on two? I thought it was over $100, 400 per parcel?
Yeah, it worked out to be, I think, $200,000 some thousand, so five, four or five times that.
About $400.
So on the April 22nd agenda, we're going to have, whether we want to raise it or not?
That's probably what we'll ask you for your final direction on that. I just wanted to kind of give you a heads up that that's, we're going to be asking that question.
So you're not asking for us to make that decision tonight? That will be at April 22nd, that we have to make that decision?
Yeah, unless you're prepared to do that tonight, but we can wait till the 22nd. We just have to, by the 26th, we have to send out the notices.
Well, I would, I would, I would recommend waiting to the 22nd.
You have to have a public hearing for that?
No.
No, but, but for a variety of reasons, I would just recommend waiting to the 22nd.
Probably because there wasn't another recommendation, yeah.
We would of course want to hear what Jim has to say.
I'll see you through.
So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Robert?
I like what you used in your very conservative numbers. I'd keep doing that.
Okay.
I don't think we should be any more aggressive, because I can argue either way, why they should be more, or why they should be less. I think we should be as safe as we can be, so we don't dig ourselves in too big of a hole.
I agree.
When you met with the Finance and Budget Committee, did they, were there any discussions about, have you gone that far with them about this, where they chimed in on this at all?
Yeah, no, I didn't specifically ask for their input on the, we presented them, and there was nothing that suggested that they should change.
Okay.
But again, we'll be back in early May with so final directions and final projections, and at that point, you can all either bless them, or decide we might want to tweak them.
Be, any other questions?
No, I just would like, if there's a change in the, in the handout that we have, that we just get that on the diast, just so I don't have to keep writing in the information, because I'll have to either do that now or later, look it up on the web section.
Just discovered it 15 minutes before the meeting.
Okay, yeah. Pat, any other questions?
Okay, Robert, thank you for that. Here are no other questions.
Do I make a motion, we receive and file?
Yes.
And then, Madam Mayor, I just wanted, for the record, because I don't...
Public comment?
Well, there is, there is no one here.
Yeah, right.
And so I was just...
But I thought I might have to say it.
I was just looking at the screen, and so if someone's watching, they may think, why we are not taking public comment. We, of course, are, but no members of the public are here. That's why we skipped the general public comment as well. Sorry for the interruption, Madam Mayor.
No, thank you, as always.
Can I make a motion, receive and file?
Second.
Robert?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Robert. Hope the traffic's not too bad going home.
Thank you. He's been building up.
All right, so...
May I ask who pulled Ada?
Yes, may I ask that, too? Thank you. When was that, I mean?
I just, I just didn't, and then she said, after I voted, then she said, I'd like to talk about it.
Fine.
So I just wanted to, because I had some questions about some of the things that were brought up. I know there was quite, quite a few things that were answered regarding the questions we had, but still, something that is troubling, and it is, Ms. McGowan agrees it's very logical, is that why we would be required to continue to pay for monitoring if in fact we are not contributing a significant amount of water flow to a particular receiving waters, which in this case, we're talking about the harbor. So she agrees that that's logical, but unfortunately, at this point, based on the way the State Department drafted the permit, it doesn't get you off the hook. But, you know, so at this, at this point, I understand the theory behind wanting to at least give the go-ahead, you know, with being involved in the group, but in the meantime, there's going to be clarification gotten about the fact, because there was apparently a strong argument, we could have that, what we see in terms of the very little flow from the Sepulveda Canyon that is below the target limit, that we could argue that that even more applies to the harbor area and to the Santa Monica Bay, and therefore, they should agree that, at least as far as that is concerned, we don't have to contribute to the reduction of pollution in those receiving waters. At least if they give us that. If not, then we would have to do some monitoring like we've done with the Sepulveda Canyon. But at this point, I think, and I did ask our city attorney, because to me, knowing that the, this regulatory agency, the Water Board, has to only do what they legally can do from, from, in this particular case, the Clean Water Act, there's been a lot of, I've heard a lot of statements made by other city council members around the county about how there's quite a bit of difference between what the Clean Water Act says and how far the state Water Board goes. They go far beyond, is the, is the general information I've heard, which would not be legally appropriate, because as a regulatory agency, they're only to regulate what the, what the law says, that they can't go beyond the law. I guess... I guess the question is whether that's a legal issue that we could actually mount with other cities. But in, in this particular case, I asked, I don't know if Mr. Donigan had a chance to check with, with his counsel that our experience in water issues, this has gone on for a long time. I know that Kathleen said that there's some cities that have taken issue with the fact that it's a unfunded state mandate, that the state is going beyond the Clean Water Act and therefore requiring more and they're, and not providing for resources for cities to comply with it. And they've sued, but then they still had to pay the legal fees and the amount of money they got, from what she heard, was not significant enough to justify the legal fees.
Are you saying they prevailed?
Yeah, that's what she said. So, but, but then the, the gain wasn't significant because you had to pay all these legal fees to get this rather minimal gain. So is what I understood from her statement. But, but I'm just saying, I, I think that there should be, going forward, if we approve this so we can go beyond, we still have until December to start. But I did, I think it's important that we as a council have some kind of provision, as has been in the past, that with this particular MOU, that we have an ability to get out of the MOU with of course, the payment of whatever fees that we have incurred based on expenses they've already expended on our behalf. And apparently, other MOUs have had that kind of provision in it. But we don't know how it's going to be drafted. So Ms. McGowan said, okay, that's, that has happened in the past. I don't know how they will do it, but I think it's important to flag that issue to make sure that we could at least revisit the issue. And perhaps our city attorney could bring us some more information about what are the abilities for us individually because of our unique situation to get out of having to pay additional costs because we do have a compliance track record with, with regard to the Sepulveda Canyon. But in even generally, whether there's some overreach there that we could.
I'm not sure that I understand what your ask is, but let me just ask you a question. We still have to pay for all the monitoring that we do at Sepulveda Canyon. And so even if we were able to say that over there, it's the same thing, that we would meet the same criteria, we would still have to pay for, to monitor over that. We'd have to go to all the money that we paid to set up and get that, that approval and then continue to monitor it. It seems to me like this is less, less expensive, but that's just my opinion. So let me back up. What are you asking us to do?
Just at this juncture, we basically will approve just doing the go ahead and then ask for some legal information regarding, well, maybe before I do the legal information, to make sure that our city attorney and Ms. McGowan are directed to make sure we have a, in the MOU, an ability for any of the cities involved to be able to get out of the MOU if for some reason we are not, we're getting some kind of legal reason that we can get out of it. Either the state board says you are compliant.
Put that in some type of a concise.
Yes.
Thank you.
I mean, what do you call that kind of a clause?
It would simply just be something in the MOU that allows us to withdraw. Once again, typically, it's, it's not, wouldn't be a quick one. It wouldn't be like a two week thing, but usually you give them six months notice. And then of course, as Councilmember Derringer, we would be responsible for any of the, any of our share of the monitoring costs up until that withdrawal date. And so that was, that was how I understood the.
Isn't this a single MOU for all the cities to sign?
Correct, yes.
So you'd have to be modified and everybody would have to agree?
Well, I mean, that's, we, we haven't seen the MOU yet. And so that is what I understood the direction from you is to inquire. And you're right, if, if there's pushback, if, if, you know, I can't guarantee that everyone else will agree, but we can of course ask.
And this would be for any of the parties? It's not like just for rolling calls. It would be like any party can withdraw.
So just to be simple, so we would approve what's here and then we would add that, we would ask if we can add a thing into the MOU that we could get out over a reasonable period of time. And if they say no, then we, then that's all it is. Right? That's all we're looking for? It's just that we're going to ask and then we're going to see what they say.
And that's clear direction for you enough?
Correct, yes. So the, on that topic, yes, I am crystal clear on that. Now, the other topics that were, that were addressed are a bit broader. And I understand what you're, and so, you know, obviously, we have folks that can put stuff together. I'm sure Kathleen would, can pontificate on it very, very extensively. That of course comes with a cost, but I am, I am all, all kind of ears to the, to the council. And if that direction is look at it on a cursory basis first and report back, that's, that's also totally acceptable as well.
Yeah, and what I was envisioning was something cursory, because I know they have experts in their office, as to whether or not there is a legal way, you know, that other cities have used and maybe companies. Because companies are scooped up in this too, and they have a financial incentive to not lose profit by paying these kinds of fees. So there may be some case law out there.
But my concern is the expense on getting out of this is going to cost a gazillion dollars more than just paying what we have to pay. If we were a bigger city and we had to pay more, maybe. And if we were like a company that had actually revenues and things to deal with. But we are the smallest little city in the world with the, I mean, smallest little budgets to spend 100, I mean, we're going to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars picking a fight with these guys. And maybe we would win versus paying something that they're going to probably make us do anyways. So.
And in the, the narrative of this report, and it talked about, does the city have to pay if we're not contributing? One of the things they, and they, you know, it's yes. And that if you push too hard on this, there's a concern that that would jeopardize our deemed compliance over at Sepulveda Canyon. And I think that's worth protecting.
So how about this? I make a motion, we approve what is here. That's the first part. And then the second part is, Pat and whoever we want to. Kathleen sees if we can insert into the MOU an escape clause and without pushing too hard.
If I may, I'm sorry, on page 45 of the staff report, there is a termination clause in there that allows any permanent withdrawal from the MOU for any reason. That's in the current MOU. So assuming that gets picked up in the, you know, upcoming MOU, there should be a similar clause.
Would you carry over?
Well, that's the thing. Prior MOUs had that, but we haven't got it in a draft for the next coming MOU. So this is a stand, a clause that has been in the past. And thank you for showing me the exact language because then we can point to it. But something similar to this, yes. So that we can, yeah, that basically have that same kind of a clause.
So then, so I think just, so then let's make a motion. I'm going to make a motion, we approve what's here. And you understand it's important to keep that in there to the best of our ability.
And I just wanted to clarify Mayor Mersch's comment that in talking to Ms. McGowan, she said that she was getting clarification. She had already put in that request already and she should be getting it shortly. So that this thing doesn't come up for a MOU until, you know, the December is, or maybe November at the earliest.
Something were to happen, I could, I could see that.
It's just to get information about options and what the, the law is, not to say we're going to actually sue, all right?
That's, no, I was just talking about, and she didn't say sue, just push too hard. I was saying that that's something that we want to keep on our radars, protecting what we have over there. Because with the rains, the amount of rains that we've had, I don't know that we will continue to meet that level of.
Of course we will.
Compliance, of course we will. Okay, so that's your motion? Do I have a second, please?
Second.
As, as amended.
No, just, just as it is because we're not changing it. Because he's just going to check on that the MOU, which is not in this thing. Correct, with, yes, with, with council direction to the best of our abilities, ensure a Section 12 termination clause retain, remains in that MOU. And in the event it does not, we, I can assure you, we will bring that to your attention immediately for what you guys can then decide what to do.
Okay.
All favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay, so with that, everybody's clear? Public hearing, old business, new business, matters from the city council, can I bring up just, thank you, Sam?
Thank you. Well done.
Yes, very nicely, John, and John. Nice, nice catch. Nice, nice catch, John.
Paying attention, John. I would have fallen asleep by now.
Okay, yeah. Just one quick thing from the city council. Just, I don't know how much the council is following all that's going on with our neighborhood voices and all the new stuff that's coming from the state on housing. But I did just want to let you know that I was on a call. The Coastal Commission now is starting to partner with ONV because you have two groups that want what they want and want to tell cities what they can and can't build. And they have found some common interest there because the state's now even trying to override Coastal Commission in places. And so now the Coastal Commission's not happy. So that's just to, to share that with you. And one of the cities on this call, I forget which one it was, is one in Northern California. They're halfway through their, the housing element. And lo and behold, of course, just as we've always thought, they've found that the housing isn't being generated by ADAs and other things that were approved in people's housing elements. And so they're getting some, the cities are starting to get pushback about, oh, they were in your numbers, but you haven't done anything. You haven't really produced anything. So we may be taking a look at your numbers mid-cycle. So just, just sharing that with you.
And then please be counting every ADU slash guest house. I mean, all, we should be counting all that stuff and getting credit for this.
Well, we are. But what I'm saying is that, and we are, we wouldn't have an approved sixth cycle if we hadn't. But midway through, HCD, who is not regulated by anybody and can change things kind of however they want. But I decided, I found it very interesting that these two groups, and I'm glad they are because I'll get more people involved and educated and things, you know, when they pull in the Coastal Commission. Redondo Beach is really active in this, as is Huntington Beach. And I'm thankful that we don't have the Coastal Commission issues to deal with on top of ours because they've got some conflicting things, which makes it even more challenging for them. So the, the battle, the battle continues. Just wanted you to know that. Anything else matters from city council? Matters from staff, 15A, consider dissolving the standing solid waste and recycling committee and create a limited ad hoc committee to resolve specific issues related to solid waste services in the city. Going to turn that over to staff, but Pat, I'm going to want to say to you, I couldn't talk to you about this ahead of time because we can't talk about anything, which is why this is on here. And I'm not plotting behind you.
Treat me like a mushroom as well.
I don't want to treat you like a mushroom, that's why this is here.
Madam Mayor, member city council, that's exactly why we're talking about this this evening. During the short period of time that I've been here, I've been talking a lot of trash. And most of my conversations have been limited or constrained because our group, the, the solid waste and recycling committee is that. It is governed by the Brown Act, which means we have to be, be sure that any and all conversations that includes both of you to be in the same room has to be published and duly noticed. Well, so much has transpired during the time from which I've been here. That talked about where the mother truck locations are going to be. And, and these are really just items that focus on, we need to just get to the point and fix these errors. And throughout our conversations, staff met with the city attorney to see what we can do to really just eliminate the concept of considering it a standing committee, but rather referring it to be an ad hoc committee, which allows us the flexibility to have a Zoom call conversation with staff and maybe a member of our public services to talk about what we've been talking about and noticing. It just allows us to have a more immediate response time to addressing these issues. Now, I know this is something that's been going on for several years prior to me coming on board and I'm, I'm maybe making a big ask as well. But it would be really helpful to be able to have both my committee members, both Mayor Mersch and Councilwoman Wilson in the same room and not having to go through the hoops and hurdles to find an update in which we can duly notice it and, and really follow that, that confined structure. So this evening, I am requesting that the city council consider dissolving the standing committee and reclassifying it to an ad hoc. And I'll let the city attorney to add in additional information as he provided some good info.
Sure, thank you so much, Madam City Manager. So a couple, two things I would just add. One, the, if there is appetite to go to an ad hoc, nothing precludes said ad hoc from having a public meeting. So it's not like you're, you have to, you can only do it, you can tell the public, hey, next Wednesday, we're going to be here. We want to hear your feedback. Come and let us know. So it's not an either or, rather it just allows that flexibility as Madam City Manager explained. The one limiting factor of an ad hoc is that the, the purpose of it would need to be limited. It would, in, as described in the staff report, it says to look into the, you know, resident pickup issues that we've, there's been an uptick in complaints. So that would be the task of the ad hoc. Once that, you know, issue is thoroughly investigated and that ad hoc makes a recommendation, it dissolves. If there's another trash issue, let's say with, you know, recycling percentages, that would need to be reauthorized again by the city council. So I want to be clear, this is not just changing it to ad hoc and then it's going to operate exactly the way it is just without the Brown Act. There are, there is that, that drawback in terms of, you're limited by the subject matter and that it would dissolve. But nothing would preclude you from then creating another one for another issue related to trash. So that's all I had to add.
Turning to the, other issues to the entire council?
A hundred percent, correct, yep, yeah.
Because that, that is, none, whether you're an ad hoc or a standing, you don't get to make the decisions. You bring recommendations to the council. So it's not like.
That is correct.
No money's being spent, no policies are being made behind the scene. We just bring recommendations, as everybody knows who's been on any committee, standing or ad hoc, that it's just to get the work done and do the investigation, do whatever, and come back and bring recommendations to the council for decisions.
I make a, make a motion, we approve as presented?
Second.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Post time at the races here.
The, Robert's comment about the trash, pick up rate going to 5%. Did anybody independently verify that?
We are.
So in terms of independently verify the.
The 5% increase?
CPI rate, you mean?
Oh, the, so no, we, not yet, but we.
Because come to us with this, it's like, really? It seems kind of high, but.
Right, so, so I would, and I, I apologize for, for this answer. There's some issues with it and that's why I was adamant that we wait till the 22nd, at which point they will be fully fleshed out and explored. And we, and we will be sure to triple check that CPI as one of the, one of the issues to discuss.
Because it was below the general CPI last time and I thought we were brilliant because we agreed to that. And now it's significantly above, I think, isn't it? CPI is still.
You're such a made up.
Well, and they have their own individual one and at the rate their trucks are breaking down, I'm surprised they're not, I can see why they're trying to do this.
And I'm working with the city attorney on a couple of things to address that. We, well, we still have a red flag, so we'll address it.
Anything else matters from staff?
None, Madam Mayor.
Okay, no closed session. I would like to adjourn the meeting until Monday, April 22nd, right back here, home base, 7 o'clock. What's the score? What's the score?
Oh, they didn't crush that.
What do you mean? 11? It's within 11.
Mind telling me who?
38, 49.
You're calling 49, 30.